So that's where it's at, they've done the cement work. And it looks, it looks quite nice. That's where we are on the Y one hundred. The, um, the next one, uh, International Student Exchange, I've asked Dawn Davis to come in and speak a little bit about that. I don't know how many of you know Dawn, but Dawn is a parent.
A lot of children.
And she is, I'm not sure what's your official title, Dawn, so I didn't want to butcher it.
I am officially a regional manager for International Student Exchange Program. I've worked locally here in the Leslie, Mason, Stockbridge area through our program. And, um, I have a field of people that also work under me in Ohio, Iowa. So we have a huge field with our program, International Student Exchange. And each year, the field staff gets to nominate an educator of the year award. And we submit it to our headquarters office in New York. And they look at the nominations and some of the criteria is, you know, they have to have a lot for the program. They've had to work with our program for at least two years. Um, they go above and beyond for our program in the students. And, um, they believe in the mission of the program. So this year, I nominated Jeff. And he was selected as our educator of the year. And so. So what our program offers for the educator of the year is each year we have an international trip. And we typically pick the country where our students come from. So, you know, this year it's Barcelona, Spain. And we have several students that come from Spain. We've had several students here that have been from Spain. We have them from all over Germany. We have this fellow. So our international trip this year is Barcelona, Spain. And Jeff gets to join our program on ISE's dollar. And, uh, he gets to meet a lot of our international agents. He gets to meet the staff at our headquarters office, um, a lot of field people. And I'm super excited that they selected him because we have phenomenal support in our community. We have a lot of people that host for us. I've asked a lot of people to host for us too. Bud. You're selling me off.
I forgot the Mexican at home.
You just asked him for one student, I think he wants two.
He needs two. Two, you know, and you can arrange that. No, I, I'll tell you, I love working with Leslie Public Schools in our community. We are phenomenal, I have to say. Our school, for the numbers that we have here, four hundred, five hundred kids or whatever the count we have here. Um, it's phenomenal, the number of exchange students that are allowed to attend the public school here. You know, Mason, um, will only allow six exchange students each year. And when they hit that six, we can't get any more exchange students in there. Stockbridge is a little bit better. Most of the schools in our district never hit the number, or, you know, in the area that we hit as a community. We have a lot of the support of our staff, you know, and I appreciate everybody in our community and in the school that helps us. And I'm super excited to have Jeff be a part of that in Barcelona, Spain. And get to meet everybody and our agents and, and so I, you know.
Well, I'm, I can't say anything because I think he's too busy and I don't. Go and one of us.
It is, I think you need to take his place.
It's awesome, it's awesome. It's so.
I am so excited, I just so, so proud of serving up. And I told him all the time and everybody here, his staff and, you know, they work for these kids and they come in and it's like. English and, you know, and it can be challenging at times, it really can, Mary knows, you know. You know, and then we have some that their English is phenomenal and we have some that it's at home and for whatever reasons, but, um. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Awesome.
I call my office every day. Did you have picking, did you have better picking?
This means you, you have to do a Facebook account and you got a Facebook account. Sorry, so it's just gonna have to happen.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, you know, of course, if you know anybody that wants to host, you know, you can contact myself, you can contact the school, you can contact Jeff. You know, love anybody to be a part of it and it's a great experience. Our family has hosted thirteen kids.
Wow.
So we know what it's about, we know, we've had the kids in our home, it's not that I'm just here. You know, I believe in it, I love it. Um, I have a boy coming in at eight thirty flying into Lansing today. He's going to visit us for eighteen days.
Eighteen days.
So anyway, I need to go because we're picking him up at the airport and thank you. And I'm excited to make sure he, uh. I'll tell you, I, I can't say enough about our community, I really can't. And this year, we have new host family, you know, it's, it's exciting, it's exciting to develop the relationship with the kids. What drives us. Thank you. Thank you. Bye now.
I can see why I asked Dawn to come in.
Would you feel guilty about bragging about yours?
I, I met Mary Stewart today and that's a wonderful young lady.
She wants to go bear hunting. She does.
She'll put it right in there.
Yes. She was a good vet, yes.
Preliminary numbers, it, uh, you know, it's pretty early to tell because we've got, we've got a lot going in, a lot going out. Jimmy emailed me today and we got this many going out, this many coming in. But it looks like we're going to be right about what we talked about, you know, what, right about what we budgeted for. And that's the way it is always this time of year. You know, we know that, uh, we're going to have some requests for records, we know we've got some coming in. So, uh, it looks like we're going to be real close to what, what we budgeted. It's hard for me to give you a solid number because it's one of those things that changes about an hour. So I know the number that I pulled today is not accurate because it's changed since, since then, so. But it, I don't think we're going to see, from what I've seen so far, the big influx we had last year. But I mean, we're going to be, we're going to hold probably what we have.
So we hired the, um, you know, for kindergarten or what that's all being. So what, so third, fourth is stable so far or what?
We lost three third graders.
We lost three third graders.
Yeah, four third graders.
Personnel changes, obviously, you know, we just talked about the one Deanna running horse that took the kindergarten position. Which holds the young fives and we'll bring a young fives recommendation to you here later today. Ann Walker, and we'll talk about it earlier in a little while. We still, uh, tomorrow, no, Thursday, I believe, Jim and Andy are going to work on tomorrow. Counselors, uh, for the middle school, high school counseling position. And we have.
Elementary high school.
Elementary. You almost got an extra.
I was afraid you were going to take the one I had to give you.
So the, the elementary high school counselor. And, um, we have about five applicants now for the, uh, German teacher, so.
What is that, what was it?
That was as tomorrow is.
And how many could council, I'm sorry?
Uh, it was thirty-one for the counselor.
Yeah, yeah, it was over, it was, I don't want to say thirty-five, it was six.
We'll have everybody in place before school starts and that's a good thing to have teachers in the classroom, so.
What is technology schools Friday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow too, as you're coming.
Uh, we'll talk about the end, but it's, it's on for an hour. The billboard was supposed to be up today when Troy and I drove by it coming back from Y one hundred, it wasn't up. If you visualize that going north, it's on the south side of the road, but you see it going north, if that makes sense.
Coming into.
Coming in, yes, so. Um, and it should be up, I don't know if the weather held them up or what, it should be up, well, hopefully tomorrow, so.
That's the one that has McDonald's down.
Um, I'm not sure what it has, I think it's.
I think it's the Big B coffee.
It's ours because ours is coming down.
Oh no, it's the, it's that one, it's on the west side of the highway.
Um, letter of agreement, I'm going to pass the, I think you saw the original one that now we have a signed letter of agreement. This was, uh, as you remember, the pay structure, uh, has an off-schedule payment, uh, to the teachers. And if, because of retirement rates going up in October, if we pay that structure out prior to that, it actually saves us some money because we have to pay less retirement. Um, the, the contract called for it to be paid in December. So Will and I got together, I don't think they had any, um, disagreement of paying out early since it saved us. It wasn't substantial, I mean, it was like fourteen hundred dollars, it still was fourteen hundred dollars, so it did save us some money to pay it out early. So that, that was the reason behind the letter of agreement. And that ends that. And I'm going to pass that.
Um, so we will move on to board discussion and our action. And Jeff is passing up first. This is a motion to assume the tentative agreement ratified by the Michigan Education Association slash NEA for the support staff.
I think you, you've seen all this, we've talked about it before. This is just the final tentative agreement, the support staff didn't vote and ratify it, so now it's just, uh, for us to, uh, for us to do that, so.
I'd be there, bud.
Supported by Bud to approve the tentative agreement ratified by the Michigan Education Association slash NEA for the support staff. Um, is there any discussion or does anyone want to have to review it? It is the same stuff that we've talked about, uh, a couple of months ago. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Um, item D is a motion to hire Heather Dykstra as a special education resource teacher for the recommendation of special education director Kathleen Dot. This is enclosure seven. By John. Supported by Dan to hire Heather Dykstra as a special education resource teacher for the recommendation of special education director Kathleen Dot. Is there any discussion? No, since she's.
This is in essence the replacement of the early childhood special ed teacher. Although the, um, the assignment is going to be with some of those students, but take some of Deanna's caseload to who's maxed on caseloads, so. So it's not adding a teacher, it is a teacher that we had, it's just a, kind of what we decided, you know, remember, uh, Andrea. Like, Jim, I don't know, did I, did I say that caseload?
This is the one to replace the one that they hired, that she hired and then she resigned?
Right.
Nicole Cole something.
Which is half of it is the ECSE and then half at middle school.
I'd say it's half at middle.
So it's actually half at middle school.
So this is moved by John, supported by Dan to hire Heather Dykstra as a special education resource teacher for the recommendation of special education director Kathleen Dot. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Item C is a motion to hire Ann Walker as a K-Club Young Fives teacher for the recommendation of Woodward Elementary Principal Jim Del. This is enclosure eight. Moved by Dan. Supported by Erica to hire Ann Walker as a K-Club Young Fives teacher per the recommendation of Woodward Elementary Principal Jim Del. Is there any discussion?
I just want to let you know, Ann was planning to be here, she's thrilled, uh, but she got a stomach bug over the weekend, so something going around. So she called me earlier today and said, I, I really wanted to be there, I'm just not feeling well.
Thank you for not coming. Maybe that's what we should do.
There were, there was one of our teachers that was on the interview committee at the Missland. The stomach bug, so there's something going on, I don't know, there. No, she, uh, she was planning on being there, so.
I just want to say, she was a student teacher in my son's third, third grade class and then I know the parents were really happy with her doing the long-term stuff last year, so I think she's probably a really good student.
She worked very hard last year, she knows Jeff.
So moved by Dan, supported by Erica to hire Ann Walker as a K-Club Young Fives teacher for recommendation of Woodward Principal Jim Del. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
How, how many students are in that class?
It was twenty-one until they had a request for records to date for someone, um, so it's down to twenty.
Okay.
Good question. Next is a motion that the Board of Education approve the resignation of Jennifer Gould as high school German teacher effective August second, two thousand and twelve. Moved by Bud. Supported by Mary. That the Board of Education approve the resignation of Jennifer Gould as high school German teacher effective August second, two thousand and twelve.
Sorry, that is truly, I'm retarded.
Is there any discussion? Uh, I would just say, you know, she had resigned because her husband took a position out of the family, so she regretfully resigned. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Um, this, next is a motion that the Board of Education approve the first reading of revisions to policy number nine two five zero, which is the use of district facilities. And that is enclosure ten. Moved by Dan.
I'll support.
Supported by Erica, that the Board of Education approve the first reading of revisions to policy number nine two five zero, use of district facilities. Is there any discussion?
Some of the things you saw that would be struck in there will come back as regulations. So if you're wondering why some of that was not, it'll come back as, but. Part of the policy is very close to what regulations should be, so it'll come back as regulations. The other big change is it did include the, um, the bit about funerals because in the past we've had an issue with funeral. The real statement was is that funerals could be in the auditorium or in the gymnasium, but they'd have to be at least an hour after school ends. We ran into an issue before with one that was so close to school ending that we had people coming in and actually the, you know, the funeral people were coming in and setting on those, they're just not good situations, so.
And also this is just the first reading, so it'll come back for the official.
And then, then once we get through the second reading, then we'll bring back the regulations and regulations to the right it's wanting.
And if, and if it does happen on Saturday, then their discharge facility.
And that'll be part of the regulations, but, and it's going to take Troy and I a little bit of time to put it back together.
Yeah, we had talked about this.
A lot.
Work jobs.
Yeah.
So this is moved by Dan, supported by Erica, that the Board of Education approve the first reading of revisions to policy number nine two five zero, use of district facilities, which is an enclosure ten. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Um, next we have enclosure eleven, which, this is a motion that the Board of Education approve the second reading of the merit pay policy as outlined in enclosure eleven.
Support.
Moved by Dan, supported by John, that the Board of Education approve the second reading of the merit pay policy as outlined in enclosure eleven. Is there any discussion? I just want to say thanks again to the committee and, and James and everybody else for putting their, the work into it. And I think this is a great foundation and, and as we continue to say, we can always build on it, um, for next year, or future years, so. Thank you. So moved by Dan, supported by John, that the Board of Education approve the second reading of the merit pay policy as outlined in enclosure eleven. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Next we have, um, a motion that the Board of Education approve the tax levy as shown in enclosure twelve. And as I always do, I'm going to ask the RUT if this has to be a local, the tax levy.
I was not advised that it had to be local.
I'll move.
I'll support it.
Moved by Dan, supported by Mary, that the Board of Education approve the tax levy as shown in enclosure twelve. Is there any discussion? This is again, just the formality of what we have to, um, adopt, um, per the state's reg, uh, requirements so that we can levy the taxes upon the school. Any further discussion? So moved by Dan, supported by Mary, that the Board of Education approve the tax levy as shown in enclosure twelve. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven, zero? I'm going to apologize, I don't know.
Yeah, as you can see, that was kind of a lag. Um, let me, um, when we left the discussion meeting last, we, there was two things. One was to get some further clarification from the ISD, uh, the other was to post some positions. When I talked to the ISD, their real brothers, as we said, was a, was a three-year agreement. They would shorten the agreement if, if we really asked them to do that. However, they would like to at least go about a minimum of fifteen months. And part of that would be they realized that if it didn't work in a year from now, we'd be making a decision to change that and have to give a about a three-month lead period to do that. When I asked them about the priority, uh, what they meant, they said the long priority time that they were in there, which they didn't do a very good job of explaining, and I kind of admitted that. Was those are the types of things that the teacher's gone for the summer. Okay, and can you do this over the summer type of. When I said, you know, my issue with priority is everybody thinks their issue is the priority. And that's exactly what he said, yes, that's what we deal with, is that everybody's issue is the priority. Um, and so, you know, they said they obviously have to get the, the tickets, triage them as they come in, and do have to make some judgment. Because obviously if, uh, you know, if the, uh, if there's a state report doing the systems down and doesn't allow us to do that, that is the most important at the moment. You know, because that has to get done. And he used the example, although it wouldn't affect us, but with the ISD, if the accounting services are down and they can't make payroll, that for that time is the most important thing. And everything else has to, has to be locked.
Do they have like a general list then of what priorities are?
Basically what he indicated to me was, it was if it had to be done to maintain a service that maintained the running of the district, that would be the number one priority.
Followed by what, the classrooms and.
Were we able to keep everything in-house, you know?
The. Our.
For fifteen months. For the year, yeah.
Our equipment.
That would, um. So that, those were the three questions, the main questions. And they, they said they would be willing to do that at this point. As far as this morning, we had sixteen educational technology integration specialist applications. We had six support specialists and seven tech administrator technician applications. And we've had a couple more come in later today and I don't remember what area they're in, so they came in later near the end of the day. Uh, I did speak with, um, a gentleman that, um, is going to be out of a position due to, uh, transferring of, uh, services to, to Jackson ISD. And I think it's his intention to also apply and, um, so we would get at least one more. In fact, he wants to come in and, and talk to me tomorrow and learn about it, so. So the, you know, at this point, the direction is do we want to look at the ISD and, and lock on for around fifteen month time period? Or do we want to hire our own, and I'm, that's what, that's what the motion needs to be, so. One, one or the other, you know, we're at the tipping point now, so we have to make a decision. And if we decide to go on our own and it comes down tomorrow, I would interview probably Thursday and Friday of this week, potentially Monday or next week.
And we share with you, say, within the budget constraints we talked about, if we would go on or not?
Um, it would depend about what direction we want, if we want to do one, do we want to do two, do we want to do one and a half? I think we can stay very close, we, we, you know, we may end up having to put, you know, another five, six thousand dollars into a really few locals.
So my, I'll just start the discussion, then we can go from there. Um, I, I do have some concerns with bringing, um, a person on staff full-time not knowing what the direction is going to be. Um, I, I don't feel, um, I don't think that it does justice to the individual who would bring on. And also it probably doesn't do justice to the district if we go into this thinking we might have an individual for one year. One, I'd be concerned of, as I always am when we're bringing new people on, how do we gracefully exit the relationship with, um, a person? And how can we legally do that? So there's my concerns because it always seems that it's difficult. Um, but then at the same time, like I also see, I'm like, all right, now it's fifteen months with the ISD, so then we, now it's not, we're trying to hire somebody in August of two thousand and fourteen. But it's, you know, November or something that's, makes it a little bit more difficult too. Just a couple of things to get the conversation started.
Well, do we, do we think, do we think we would know what, what we need and where we're going in, in, um, six months, nine months? I mean, Jeff, you're, you're going to be, you and the staff are going to be a person. We're going to have to have some feedback from the staff and from you and, and, um, the administrators, administrators on what we need and where we're going to help us. Because I don't know if any of us really, I mean, no.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you if we should hire one and a half, two, or. I guess I feel like this would give us a good point of data because we would be able to look in six months or in nine months or however long to see, okay. Eighty percent of the tickets that have come in are at a, you know, maybe level one technology person. And they're spending forty hours a week doing these types of things versus bringing someone on and not knowing what they're going into, I guess.
Right, so if we bring a director on, then, and we really truly need a technician and, so we need somebody, if we bring somebody that's heavy in director and lacking in technician. And then we find out, well, we really needed somebody that was more weighted in a technician role versus.
James? James?
What? I'm, I'm just listening. I, I don't agree, uh, sub not to the ISD, I can tell you that. I'd be opposed to it. Um, I want our district to move ahead, not just go to the ISD. I feel comfortable that we can run things in-house better than the ISD, and I've proven it time and time again. And we seem to run it better and, um, um, less complication and, um, cheaper than the ISD. I don't even, the way the ISD was set up, it was for a pupil. Okay, we're wanting the fifteen months, we're going to tolerate that. I just think fifteen months, if you're, if we're looking like we are today.
I just think fifty months, if you're, we're looking like we are today in August, we're probably just gonna boil down some quality candidates, because we can't there is a true. So we're gonna be, I'd say we don't have some this year, but it puts us a little bit more under the gun, because now you're not hiring somebody from another. Like if, if we go, if we go with the ISD, yes.
Well, we would, we would have to start looking, I mean, not, we would have to start looking next spring.
Right.
You know, really getting that employees.
Yeah.
November, December might not be as good a hiring time as starting at school.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I have not looked at every resume that was in, I've looked at several, and we have several that I thought were fairly quality people.
I'm, I'm pretty confident we'd be able to get a, a, a high-quality person if we did. I'm not saying I necessarily want to go, uh, totally in-house, but, uh, I don't think quality of a candidate would be an issue.
Right. And we've got some school districts that have changed, and they've had to have some quality people.
I think the bigger issue though is, what of the three postings would you pick? Would you pick your educational integration specialist, would you get a tech, would you get the support tech? I think that's more of the question, and I'm not sure, I, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable deciding between those three, what we really need.
Do we have, do we have any, any of the criteria that was used last year for the tickets? Do we have any tickets that we have to back on? Or just it's gone away as they get done, do you guys?
Well, we have a number of how we were going.
But they weren't closed properly, so you don't know that, you know, it took a half an hour to do this particular ticket, or it took two seconds to do this ticket.
That was, that was probably the biggest issue, we don't know what time it was involved.
And that, that determines a lot, I mean, if it's only, you know, petty, you know, timeframes of closing all these tickets, well then if you have a hundred tickets, then it only took, you know, ten minutes. But, you know, if it's something that was taking a half an hour at a shot, then you're looking at a lot more time. But I don't, I don't like fifteen months with ISD either.
I know, and this is a tough one.
But, but if you hire the wrong person, the wrong fit for the district, then where are we?
But you could, you could do that in, in, in the best of scenarios, because some people...
You could get the absolute right person to do it.
Yeah, you, you could get that for the right person. I mean, you, you get somebody that, that, you know, that looks good and talks good, and you hire him, and it doesn't work it. You see that all the time, unfortunately it went through the non-OSD. They interview well.
All of our first-year contracts under one year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, what is it?
It's, it's kind of scary, because it's putting a lot of trust in not really knowing what we need.
But for me, it's, because I'm not that technologically savvy.
I can tell you what we do need, is we do need to be able to use the technology to enhance learning, not replace learning, but to enhance learning. And I'm not sure we're getting the whole outfit out of our technology down there.
So that's like that ed tech integration specialist position?
Well, it would be, that, we would only hire, in my mind, that person if they had the ability to support also.
Right.
But, um, you know, the question is, will we get that support to the ISD? So when they're saying that who's going to be on-site, and their proposal was, uh, was an intern.
John, what do you think?
Well, I missed the meeting that you had, and you discussed it, but from the information that Jeff sent me, uh, well, I should back up here. First of all, I, I shared James's thoughts entirely about the ISD, so I probably am not going to be in favor of the ISD in all honesty. But I think that we need a person, as Jeff just described, that can integrate us into where we want to be. I think we probably need a sound manager, but he's gotta be really, a he or she has to be really technical, so.
And I, I think one of the other questions we have to answer is, can one person do everything that we, we need to do? Can one person integrate and do the support, or do we need somebody that can integrate and somebody that can support?
But if we get this ed integration specialist, couldn't we get our own intern? I mean, if the ISD is getting interns to work for them, to associate college students, why couldn't we get our own?
And that's what, that's what a lot of these...
Of the tech positions or the acting for our...
Our recent college or graduates or...
And it's gotta be a good fit, whoever, it's, if we're gonna hire a technology ed person, that has to be first. And then that person has to say, let's, let's, let's see, this would be a good person for my tech person. I mean, it's, that's almost gonna have to happen. But that person that we hired for the, for the, the technology director is also gonna have to have great technology too, because they're gonna have to know what that person's doing and if it's, and if, and if we're getting what we need from that person.
And, and looking at our timeframe, that person's gonna come in and they're gonna have to do opening of school. And they're gonna have to make sure everything's running in those first twenty months.
Right.
Because chances are, you might not get them both in here at the same time. Because I would think that if you hired an integration specialist, you would want them to interview a tech.
Yeah.
That, so you would not want to bring in a tech and an integration specialist.
So I guess, I guess, in my opinion, we should, we should weed out, weed out the, the director, integration specialist, and then from there.
There might be some of the ones that have applied for the director, that can be the integration specialist.
Right, and we can maybe offer that to them as well.
So, I mean, we'd have to look at the resumes and see which ones fit.
Is there anybody else that can help with that, or do you feel comfortable doing that? Or do you want us to help you, or what, what can we do to speed this process?
I think there's some people on the call that, that have helped with it.
Okay.
So what I think I'm hearing is that...
I could take it to my technology specialist.
So what I think that I'm hearing is that we don't want to pursue the ISD right now, and that the actual, the position that we would like to pursue is the educational technology integration specialist. But I'm seeing Erica shake her head, so what's...
No, I just, I, I just feel, given the two-year timeframe that we have between now and the start of school, that I, I think we're under too much of a crutch to make that big of a transition, and we'll have another person in the month or year. To me, fifteen months doesn't seem all that bad, because I don't know necessarily that we want to make a transition in one year again. I mean, that maybe November isn't a bad time to make a transition and post it again in a year, or in twelve months and then plan to hire within a year, or within the three months, I'm sorry. Um, I just feel like we, we're still all over the board on this, and I don't feel like we know exactly what we need and what we want. And it would give us time, it would give us data to look at what's come in, what kind of tickets are out there, what the needs are, to, to analyze that from staff, from administration, and find out what it is that they want, what it is that they need, and then what we can afford and what we can do from there, that's my initial. I don't, I'm not in love with the ISD idea either, but I think that's the best, given where we are right now. We haven't been happy with the system as we've run before, um, that's part of it.
Jeff, what's your thought on the timeline?
My thought on the timeline is, if we have a decision now, either one's due. If we make a decision next week, only one's due.
Great.
I hear you, Erica, and I agree with a lot of what you say. My concern would be that I'm not convinced that we will be able to garnish any additional data from the ISD.
That's my concern as well.
With the, the ticket system, because we haven't seen. So it's a, it's a little bit of, we don't know.
They just did, they just did this huge audit for us, and you can't, I mean, if you can't get jacked from it, I mean, I'm sorry, but there's nothing there, except for we should go with everything that they're doing, because...
Did we ask for that though? I mean, is that something we didn't make part of the metric, that we want a monthly report on data? Did we ask for that?
And then part of that is though...
Was that them coming to us and doing what they called an audit, but it really wasn't anything?
And then part of that is though, do you trust what they have to say? Or are they gonna be heavily relying on, if we tell them this, then they'll go this direction? And I think that's how, for me anyways, that's how the audit was all written, was that this is our opinion, but it basically leads to going with them. So are you gonna trust their responses, or is it gonna be all geared to, um, well, your servers are bad, so you should go with the ISD? Whether, you know, our servers are standalone or not, you know, we think that we have other servers, servers, servers at the ISD's usually built up. So I guess that's another question we're looking at too, is whether or not you trust what you're getting.
In, in fairness to Darryl Tiller from the ISD, he did say that he would help us with whatever we, if, if we were gonna hire, he would be willing to help us with some of the hiring also. He was not, he said, I'm there, I'm, the ISD is here to support you, and I will help you in any way I can to support you. So, I mean, in fairness to him, he has said that right, so, thank you.
I was gonna say, what's Mary's thought?
It's not ideal either way, I mean, I guess there's, there's problems either way you look, but...
I'm just thinking of this person coming in and having to, um, get a, a process up and going. Um, I think, you know, that would be one of the, that would be a main, a main part of the interview, is how are you gonna get this up and going as far as, you know, what people need, when you, when you receive, you know, when there's a problem, how are we gonna care, how are we gonna prioritize? That's, you know, this person is going to be hired in kind of under the gun, and, and, and is going, wanting to do a good job, and...
Possibly the applicant could have experience from another school that's built, so he's in town.
And, and, yes, right, right, so I guess I'd have to, I'd have to look at the applicant.
That's, that's a lot of it, I mean, if there's not one of us cool that is high on the tech end and...
Right, right.
Can, can jump right in and get their feet wet, uh, we're gonna be in trouble.
The perfect case scenario would be, be the, somebody that can do all the tech work, and then somebody that can do all the integration and vision setting. Because those two skills, from what I've seen, don't necessarily coincide, you know, and they're not, when you look at a lot of them, they're different skills for different people. So that would be the perfect work. Then the perfect world, can we fit that in our budget? If I'd asked the question, that's why I said, if we want to go that way, we may have had five or six thousand dollars to make that work, so...
And, and we also, always talked about, does the vision thing need to be a permanent position or a human contractor?
I just think that if we want with the ISD, we, it's, it's kind of a bandage for what we really want to be. It does give us time to prepare for the, for next year, that's the, that's the plus side. But I don't think the, the idea would be to stay with the ISD long-term.
No, and it would just be temporary, because I, I really, if we can afford it, I really want our own tech director, just like, um...
Just like what Brian says.
What Brian, where it goes, said. He, you know, he says he's happy with the ISD, but he really would rather have his own direct tech director.
I, I think there's a lot to teachers having to face somewhere maybe.
And if we can afford to do it, which we can, then...
So if, if that is the, I'm thinking of the motion now. Now, if that's the case, do we actually need a motion?
Several motions.
Or do we just have to wait until the, the person is hired? Like, I know that we would need a motion if we were to contract with the ISD, because it's a contract. But with what we're talking about now, um, I don't know if we would actually need a motion until we...
I just need a direction.
I think we, we interviewed.
What, what does it sound like the majority of the board wants? Does it sound like we want to interview?
Well, I want to interview.
Ja- James does?
I do.
I, I would like to see them interviews.
I do. Erica doesn't.
Well, and that's, that's the majority already before, so, and I, I could go your way, so...
In, in retrospect, I mean, how many years did we have the ISD for finance? We were locked into a three-year contract, and, and I sat here and I listened to everybody talking about getting out of that contract. Okay, that came up, and who's doing our finances?
ISD, for the rest of the year. I think we have a lot on our plate with this coming here.
We have plenty of time, we had three years to get out of that. Nobody did nothing, and now we're still with them.
Well, that's true, James, but we, but we were also in, in some flux with, um, our district, uh, leadership, and, and, um...
We looked at another district, sharing services, that, so, so one day we weren't doing nothing, and it just really didn't do it.
Yeah, it, it, yeah.
It just didn't work out.
It just didn't work out.
Didn't work out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
And I, I think if, if we...
So it's nice to sit here and say, well, next year we can look at it again.
So if we're looking at the applicants, if there's none there, we go with the ISD, correct?
Is that still an option though? I mean, if we look at the applicants, if we don't like the applicants, is the ISD still an option?
Well, sure. The ISD is, it can be an option right if you have the person next weekend. They can, they, I could call them on Monday and say, you know, we're gonna go with you guys, and they go with you.
Yes.
So maybe, because their present staff will come out and give us go.
So even if, even if we hire a person, would they have some services available if that person's coming in like a week before school? There'd be somebody available that we could use in addition to our person?
I didn't ask them that, but I can...
I just wonder about, I mean, we've got a lot of computers, so make sure they're running for school to start.
Maybe, maybe we could, um, look at this as its technology or integration person, and maybe we could hire temporarily someone through the ISD for technical, if we had technical, for technical support. I don't think it's a, you know, six months, year basis.
ISD seems to be really flexible with this, and they want to help us.
Well, they want business. Just so I'm clear, what I'm hearing is, look at the applicants, see what we have, and if there's reasonable ones to interview, interview. If not, ISD, ISD, they're out.
I don't think you have a choice, but...
And then postings come down tomorrow, on Wednesday morning, that would be the first thing I do.
Um, so if you don't have enough, I can write. To, to go back though, to that, the position that we're thinking of is the educational technology specialist, whatever, integration specialist. Um, but we would be willing to look at the candidates from the technology director position to see if they're a good fit for that.
I think, I think we have to look at all the candidates that are there.
And that's gonna be great segue in to how...
It wasn't great. Um, as I emailed you, uh, a week and a half ago or so, I was contacted about the potential of sharing some education, um, services with us. Uh, and that services, uh, would like to be shared is our special education directors. Staggers would like to share our director with us. The proposal that they brought to me, as I said, I'm going to listen and see what they had to say. I mean, the proposal they brought to me would be they would share director with us. The director would become, um, an ISD employee, and the services would be contracted, um, from the ISD, uh, for a special education. And that's why I think Eric said it's a great segue in, because that's the way they want to stretch with the, the, the way I went. I said I would bring him back to the board and see what the board had to say. But I was not going to do too much more than that at this point, so, um, yes, Mary?
Quiet, no information.
I was gonna say, um, Staggers is without a director, um, they are in a little bit of strange sorts. The ISD has tried to hire somebody, cannot find anybody that they feel comfortable with at this point. And I interviewed, or at least went through resumes several times, posted a point-five position, and that was to be, uh, I believe for Staggers, I didn't know whether it was in the posted, because I didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it. If he was posting a point-five special education, you know, I'd, so, um, when this came to me. The, you know, the, I guess if there is advantage to us, it is, it's an economic advantage. It's a savings of about forty-two or forty-three thousand dollars to us at this point. Uh, so that would be the advantage to us. That's the way the proposal is. The proposal would be, so I would start within a few weeks. Kathleen, um, had talked to me about this fact, she had hinted to me that, don't be surprised if you have somebody contacting you about this before, because I assume that, you know, the ISD people, not the ISD especially, people have kind of talked to me, so, um... I asked, after we got the, you know, listen, I asked Kathleen what her, uh, her feeling was, and she felt that it was doable for her, uh, to do it. And she is away at conference right now, um, but I had to bring it to you without her here, because, you know, Staggers were not in the crunch, but Staggers is in the crunch, so if it's a... So if it's a definite no, tomorrow I need to call and say, no, this is not the way we wanna go. If it's a yes, then it would be, you know, how we would, how we would make this work.
Is it a fifty-fifty split then?
It would be a fifty-fifty split.
Stockbridge has seventeen hundred children?
Yeah, about sixteen hundred.
That's not a lot of special ed.
I, I don't know, I didn't get into a lot of their particulars at Stockbridge, so.
Why does it, why does, why did the director have to become ISD, or why can't it, is it for simplicity today?
I think it's for simplicity and for, for, um. I think it was a little more, they felt it was a little more of a cleaner, um, arrangement that way, so.
Okay, Stockbridge does.
When you say they, Stockbridge?
Uh, Stockbridge.
So Stockbridge would like that, like.
But so, but that's up to me, you know, it's not set in stone that it goes through the ISD. We can discuss it with Stockbridge and propose it not through the ISD.
Could it be with us? I mean, not through the ISD, does it have to be through the ISD?
It could be the, the, the way of, I think why, um, they, and I'm, I listened to them, why they felt it would be a little bit cleaner. Because in year two, um, if you think about splitting districts, you are gonna have a little increased responsibility. And the ISD pay structure is a little bit more than ours, so, uh, going to the ISD, uh, I mean, would be compensated more for the increased responsibility. Year one, not necessarily, because it'd be based on the contract with us. And, and they only wanna do it if it is a two-year agreement. And I can understand that, because, you know, they don't wanna be, they already applied, are already posted once and are qualified, like they felt was, was qualified. So that's the question, really, that comes full-time special ed. Do the tough question I'm asking in fifteen minutes. Right, it is. I know I talked to Mrs., my concern, if you remember, was the new system. I talked to Mrs. Farley, who went to the training, and she felt a lot of learning curve was gonna be on our special ed teachers due to the online IP's. Uh, she went through the training and she said, I sat there in the computer part, but it was very easy for me. But, you know, the special ed part, she said it's semi-forty, so it wasn't that easy for me.
But you're gonna reverse roles with the special ed teacher.
But you're gonna reverse roles with the special ed teacher. They're gonna understand the special ed part of it, and not necessarily the computer part. So that was my concern, remember when we had, we asked Miss Question before, was, was that.
What is your director, what is your director's role gonna be in that anyways? Because it's gonna be your special ed teachers that have to go with the training to be more comfortable. Isn't it really gonna follow the direction?
The director's role would be verified that it was.
Being done right.
Being done right.
Got a couple things I'll just throw out. Um, one, um, good thing with going with the ISD is that it would save us on, on retirement and FICA because we don't have to, to pay that, and that's, you know, like thirty percent roughly of, of the cost. Um, one thing that I am concerned about is when we were talking about, um, this is what kinda blows my mind with this whole situation. When we were talking about sharing services with Dansville, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong anybody, um, that Ms. Doc had expressed concern about it being too heavy of a workload to split the districts. And now it would be the exact same proposition, just with a different district. And now it sounded like it isn't okay for the program, it isn't okay for the project. But that was in direct conflict to what I thought I had heard back in March, or what I thought we had discussed.
She, she indicated to me that it was doable, it could be done. Because if she had told me it couldn't be done, then we wouldn't have been here having this discussion.
Could be, I, I don't mind taking it on, or could be done, I really don't wanna take it on.
No.
Could be done, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, it was, it was more, it was, it was more of the opposite, or I, last one, could be done, I'm excited about the possibility, so.
Could we table if Jill Kathleen's available?
Um, our end could, the ISD and Stockbridge's end, I don't, more Stockbridge's end, I don't think so. Bruce Brown emailed me on Friday and said, um, they're ready to go, would like to move on it.
I would think that they'd wanna speak with her too, though.
They probably already have.
I can't say that they have, but I know they've spoken with Andrew Rabel at the ISD, and I think he has probably indicated that Kathleen would be someone that could do this, so.
Do you know what their timeline is for their next meeting and when they're, when they're going to go down this, and, and the Stockbridge?
Um, I don't know their timeline, I just know that, uh, Peter, Mr. Brown said that if we say yes, they're, they're a go, so. It's a lot of concerns that come up, and I'm not sure we can resolve some of them.
I know this is an unreasonable question, Loretta, but do you by any chance know what week they have their board meetings, Stockbridge?
No, I do not.
Does anybody in the audience know?
You don't hear that word from Loretta very often.
I, he just said that, he emailed me last week and said their board was, was ready to go. That, to me, I don't know if that meant they had a board meeting, or if he just did, yeah, yeah.
Or discussed it with them.
What, so my thought is that if their board meeting is either next Monday or next Tuesday, then we could spend a lot more time talking about this at our retreat, which is next Monday, and then hopefully make a decision and let them know that. Cause I mean, I really do, I mean, this is something that is totally weighed on me for two years now, you know, and I just don't know if I can, I mean, cause I can see it, I can see it made in no place.
I'm not sure if Barrett made a decision just getting this in front of us.
Right, I don't, I agree with that. And, and you know, we're meeting at five, so if we put it at the front of our agenda for the retreat, we could possibly have an answer for them by the time the board meeting starts.
And, and that's if it's the case.
Yeah.
And Mr. Ball, he said he's, he's.
He's checking out all of them, but.
And, and I know it puts them in a tight spot, but frankly, I'd rather put them in a tight spot than us, that's why.
Right, just let them know we need to speak with, with, with our special ed director before we make any decisions.
You know, I already have special ed on the, was planned to be on the retreat, right, for discussion. Um, because we have a table contract, so, um, so.
Do they know that?
Yes, they do know that. And I think that was another reason why they wanted to go with the ISD. Well, that's, I was taken in the back, but mine is that why she's excited about just an altitude year contract, yeah.
Well, you could see them wanting to go with the ISD, because if this is a shared employee and we have her as our employee, and we are voting on her contract, she's gonna feel much more loyal to making us happy than necessarily making them happy. Where she is an ISD employee, she's truly a shared employee, and neither one of us necessarily get to weigh in on her contract versus.
And in this sense, I think it makes more, it makes more.
It's tonight. It's tonight.
They have a meeting right now.
They don't have a work session scheduled on here? I was gonna say, is the retreat next Monday?
It's a workshop, it's a workshop.
Yeah, now, in, in this, the last thing that I, my, is my last comment, is that in this situation, I see that it does make more sense, in my opinion. If, if we are to partner in any way with another district for, um, special education services in this short a time, it makes sense for, to me, to go with the ISD.
I think it's all clear, yeah.
And to have the, have the arrangement to go through the ISD. Not saying that I necessarily support the idea, I'm just saying that, in that, in that event.
If we did support it, I agree.
I mean, you could, you could totally see why they would want to go with the ISD.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
Because of the board voting on the contract.
I think everybody, everybody involved, everybody involved. I, Stockbridge, Ms. Doc, and, and Melissa.
That's a very valid point, I think, which is probably the whole reason now is why they were prepared to be ISD.
What are your thoughts on this? Do you think you can have halftime director, or do you not think that you can let, let go, or? About the time to think about that?
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer that question, but I'm gonna kinda answer on the side. There are times, yes, but I'm concerned a little bit about the, the new, um, software, I lost it. Eliminate ad software, new software package. I was a little concerned about that. If, um, you know, if we knew for sure how that was gonna work, I would have a better feel for it. Now Kathleen went to the training. I can email her tomorrow, ask her the question, and, and forward the response back to you guys. And maybe that would be the way you would, you would like to go about it.
Cause both districts would be making the same move, right, with the software?
Yes.
Stockbridge is moving the same software as well?
Right, yeah. So in that aspect, the software might not be as big a deal, because, um, they're going to be out of it too, so. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't spend a lot of time with Kathleen on this, because, you know, it was not something that we even wanted to do. It was a flat-out no, I can do this, why I wasted a lot of time with her.
Right.
I just know Kathleen appeared to be excited when she heard the possibility. So, and sometimes it's nice to have a new challenge, right?
We have to remember this board voted not to renew the contract, so.
We, we got other issues.
There's, there's a reason. And we don't, you know, I'm just saying that I'm worried, because I think we only need half a special ed director, so.
Well, that was my vote, you know, was because of the, the need for a full-time status. I'm just, you know, ISD would like that, so.
So what, what I'm hearing, jump in if I'm wrong, is that Mr. Mantai emails Kathleen, um, asks about the software, any concern with that? And we respond, um, send us the email, and then we'll talk about it, um, like Richard, everyone.
Is that enough time? That's next Monday, right? Is that enough time?
It's enough time for us.
Yeah, it has to be enough back and forth.
I just don't have to know what it is. I just. They can't find anybody, they're, they're gonna be, you know.
And maybe if, if we get the response back from Kathleen, she says, you know, I don't really think this is doable. We know tomorrow, I can call Bruce Brown and say. Or if she says, you know what, I really think this is doable, and this is gonna work, then, you know, the thing is, we're not gonna, the retreat's not voting.
Right, right. But we wouldn't be voting on anything at the retreat anyway, because it's, it's just the discussion of what we would need, because we're not entering into a contract with the ISD at that time.
Right.
Or with Stockbridge or anything like that.
And if Kathleen was to say, yeah, I think this is really doable, I can at least get a hold of, uh, the ISD and Stockbridge and say it's, it's still on the table, as opposed to know it's, it's not. And I've tried to, you know, I emailed these ISD and Stockbridge on Friday and said, we're gonna talk about today. And that's where, and they said, thank you for updating us. And that's when Bruce emailed me back and said, um, yeah, if, if you get the okay, Stockbridge is, is ready to go, so.
All right. Any other questions, Loretta?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we move to, um, item J, which is, um, on the single sheet of paper, um, which this is a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to subsection A B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing discipline issues. Is that DM?
Yep.
Me by DM, supported by Mary, to convene into closed session pursuant to subsection A B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing, uh, discipline issues. Is there any discussion? All in favor? So that's seven, zero, and we'll take, uh, an eight-minute break, and that would be nine fifteen, that we enter into a session.